Okay, we're all in our places, they say with bright shiny faces, ready to go. So that counselor, welcome and staff and members of the public are joining us. Welcome to the town of Gibson's committee, the whole meeting for February 15, 2022. We've been held electronically within the unseen territory of the Squamish Nation. We have an agenda today. I do have one minor correction to the recommendation 3.1, but we'll correct that when we, when we get there. So that I will call a meeting to order time being 3:00 PM and ask for approval of the agenda. Councilor Crowell, Councilor Ludwig, thank you, and all in favor? Thank you, and I'll ask for receipt of all reports and information provided on the agenda. Councilor Dean Drad, Councilor Ludwig, thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much. We do have staff with us to present reports and the first one is under reports is Christian DeFolde Planner. Regarding the development variant permits at Lot A, Skyline Drive to increase building height by 0.6 meters for a new single family dwelling. So I will invite Kirsten to present.
Thank you, ma'am. I will go ahead and share my screen. There we are. So the application to be discussed today is for a development variance permit to increase the maximum permitted height for a single family residential one zone for the construction of a new single family dwelling on a vacant lot, which is known as Lot A Skyline Drive. The purpose of the report and this presentation is to obtain direction from the committee to council on whether to proceed with the application and to notify neighbors of the variance request. The subject property is outlined here in blue. It's actually located between Skyline Drive and Skyline Drive, north of the intersection with Arbutus Reach. The front lot line is actually the one on the east, which is at the higher elevation. Near the lot line, the site is relatively flat before falling off quite steeply towards the west. The property is currently vacant. As I mentioned, it is surrounded by a low density dispersed residential neighborhood up on the bluff. I would also note that since the application was initially submitted, the property has been given an address, which is 309 Skyline Drive. However, because it was Lot A when the application was initially submitted, for consistency, myself and other staff will reference the property as Lot A. To support the construction of the new home, the applicant requests the following variance to vary section 9.9 of the zoning bylaw, number 1065, 2007, by 0.6 meters from eight meters to 8.6 meters to allow the construction of the single family dwelling. It is two stories and it will have a south facing claristarred window as per the proposal. To understand the variance being requested, as usual, I would point out that it's important to know how the the regulation is defined. The zoning bylaw, in our case, for a flat roofed building defines building height simply as the vertical distance from average grade to the highest point of a building or structure. So just point out the average grade portion of that, which we'll get to in a moment. This is presenting the south elevation of the proposed home. The solid red line that I have added indicates the maximum allowed building height of eight meters, while the dash line demonstrates that 0.6 meter height variance that is being sought. The declaristary window that I mentioned is located right where my mouse is right here. Because the site's topography begins to slope steeply downwards towards the west, the average grade of the site is actually substantially lower than the grade of the eastern, the flat eastern section of the property, which means that while the building itself may look like it may only be 7.2 meters in height when viewed at grade from upper skyline, the building height is actually 8.6 meters. So this was this this sort of difference between what appears and what actually measures by the regulation is the rationale for requesting the variance in the first place. This is the site plan. From the applicant, I have added again red lines around the footprint, in this case of the proposed dwelling, whereas the thick black lines that are presented here are from the applicant for the proposed tree protection measures. And regarding the trees, it is noticed noted by staff that the modest size of the footprint and the generous side yard setbacks do allow the development to retain a substantial number of existing trees between the home and neighboring properties, which is helpful to minimize any effect of the of the increased height. And from that, I could get to this in considering variances. Policy requires counsel to consider certain criteria which are addressed in detail on pages three and four of my report. However, in consideration of this application, staff would generally find that the criteria presented here are of particular relevance. So firstly, that the variance will not result in significant negative impacts on surrounding properties. Sort of mentioned that the trees and whatnot thus far, but due to design considerations, it's not considered the impact will be significant on neighbors or the environment. The next one is actually not met under staff's assessment, which is the is a demonstrated need for the variance in order to permit reasonable use of the property. Reasonable use for the property, of course, is a single family home. However, it is envisaged that there could potentially be alternate design approaches that could avoid the need for that request. Next, the overall intent of the original bylaw requirement is not compromised. The intent of height regulation is to maintain the scale and development, a scale of development and the character of sort of the dispersed residential neighborhood on the bluff. And this proposed design respects that that pattern that is established. And then finally, the variance does not appear to establish a precedent for other properties, but responds to a site specific situation or difficulty. The site specific constraints that are discussed throughout the report are the tough topography of the land and exposed bedrock throughout the site, as well as the presence of large trees, which have which efforts have been made to retain by the proposal. So despite the application and the request not satisfying all of the criteria for variances that the council has set out, staff is still recommending approval. It is considered that this the scale of the of the requested variance is relatively minor in nature, that the design treatment for the site helps to avoid any adverse effects on the environment, any privacy impacts on neighbors, and that the screening presided by the existing vegetation will mitigate any additional height effects. So that that will be part of the recommendation that is presented shortly. The application was referred to various agencies for their comments. At the date of this presentation, I have not received any referral comments from the Squamish Nation. While the building department and the Gibson's and District Volunteer Fire Department have identified no concerns. Infrastructure Services comments are presented a little more detail in the report. I've summarized them here generally on two main categories. New servicing obviously will be required for a new home. Sanitary will need to be connected to a manhole to the southeast. And the cost charges for crossroad access services will apply. At this, at this point in time, overhead wiring is not proposed. However, if any is proposed as they go through development, a variance will be required for that as well. For trees, tree protection is required, including for the off-site trees, such as the ones in the boulevard in front of in front of the property. And also that the applicant could consider reconfiguring the proposed parking to retain one Arbutus, which was proposed for removal. So in consideration of these comments and the assessment criteria, recommendations by staff are summarized here. Essentially, council may either direct staff to notify neighbors of the DVP application or not to support the application. Should staff direct, sorry, should council direct staff to notify neighbors? We would then report back to council with any comments received from neighbors prior to a decision being made. I've also included that the recommendations as presented in the staff report and as amended by the mayor prior to my presentation be forwarded to tonight's council meeting. So with that, I say thank you, and I will turn the floor over to the committee for discussion.
Thank you very much, Kirsten. Could you please put the plan diagram back up for a second?
This one?
Yes, please. I notice there are the parking stall on the, the, there are two parking stalls. Is that?
There are.
Okay, so that's anticipating two, two parking spaces. Which is the one that has the Arbutus tree in it?
That is this one to the south. Their beat is right under where it says stall.
Okay. And the other, yeah, so that's the maximum two parking spaces on site then, and there's no garage, I see for this.
No garage, minimum two parking spaces are required for any single family dwelling. It may be possible to fit a parking space on this side instead, and therefore retain that Arbutus.
Okay. I do have some questions, but I'll turn it over to council first. Councilor Lumley?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I know that I lived right across the street from these people after they bought the property. And they spent a lot of time, well, actually hand cleaning up the property and surveying the property themselves. They seem to be like, I never got to meet them, I'd wave at them, but they seemed pretty. They were just soaking up the nature of the property. So I have every, I have like, I just got that vibe from them that they're really interested in preserving as much as they can. So that's why like for 0.6 meters, I guess, or whatever, it's like, I don't have a problem with it at all. I think these people have really good intentions, how to use the property and they're, they'll save as much as they can, which is a, which is kind of a relief other than people just clear cutting properties and rebuilding and replanting. So that's, that's, that's what I I noticed anyway.
Thank you. Councilor Ludwig?
Yeah, I support this variance request as well for a number of reasons. One, because it appear, it appears to be within the height parameters anyway, so that's a good start. From what I understand, it looks like they could build out and not require variance, but in doing so would probably require more trees to come down. And if we're only talking about half a meter in height, when it's going to appear to be within scope anyways, and we get the added benefit of preserving the trees, then I'm all for it. So I personally, I would support hearing what the neighbors have to say about this. I think it's a good plan.
Councilor Dean Drad?
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I shared the same. I was like, when I look at the project, I thought, well, this is a pretty respectful project. The footprint is small. Yeah, I support unless I hear from a neighbor screaming, but I don't think, I think, and even though the trees are probably higher than the house anyways. I'm curious with the observation from the infrastructure service, because when, when it says applicants should consider reconfiguring proposed parking to retain our beauties. I'm just trying to understand really what it means in a recommendation, right? Because obviously, it could be easy fix, it could be not. But is it really that it's requiring that the owner presents an alternative, or it's just like, because I'm sure it's like Councilor Lumley mentioned, it seems that the person has put a lot of thought. But obviously, if we were able to save on our beauties, especially in this location, which is, it's a good location for our beauties, I understand by the substrate. But I'm just trying to understand because you have this observation and it should, but what does it really mean?
Sure. Thank you for that question. Based on this, the scope of what I'm looking at for the height variance, there, there isn't really any ground from staff perspective to require a specific recommendation for moving the configuration of parking. If they hadn't required a height variance, they could have proceeded directly to a building permit and would have been reviewed through infrastructure for a tree removal permit along with that. And so by bringing this up to the applicants as part of this process, it helps them to start thinking about how they can deal with that. So that when we come to building permit, it's not a surprise.
Councilor Crowell?
Thank you, Mayor Bemish. Um, yeah, I, I think, you know, faced with the challenges anyone has with building on the bluff, I think, and certainly it's been sort of backed up by what Counselor Lumley was saying, that the applicants are certainly trying to preserve as much as they can. I, you know, it's, and it's interesting because the tree protection, you know, we watched a huge Arbutus up the street from us come down because the people basically built a house smack where the Arbutus was standing. And because they weren't applying for any variances or anything else, it just came down. So, you know, I think staff have noted that to the applicant that if they can come up with an alternate plan to save the trees, albeit, but I certainly propose support the variance.
Thank you. Yeah. I don't have, similarly, have concerns with the variance. It is an architectural variance. It's an architectural feature, not necessarily relevant to the home at all. And with without that height, it doesn't affect the footprint of the house. It doesn't mean they're going to expand outward because they're not gaining or losing any space by that height restriction. It's just kind of having an extra light within the house through the window. But that being said, I don't, I do appreciate the effort they've gone to, to make sure that this house, this building fits in with the landscape, and I don't have any objection to it. Hearing from council, just to draw attention to a change in the wording of the proposed resolution. And that is that neighbors be notified on the date of council's consideration of the decision on the issuance of the development variance permit. So as opposed to, it's just the decision, so it's a consideration of the decision of the variance permit. And again, secondly, asking this before tonight's council meeting for adoption. Council, somebody choose to make the recommendations amended there, Councilor Crowell, thank you, Councilor Ludwig, seconded. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you, Kirsten. I really appreciate the opportunity to learn as well about these processes and these diagrams in terms of height issues, stuff like that. It's very helpful. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, moving on. Next item in our agenda is short term regulations. Again, we're back and suspect Director Planning is going to join us. Thank you. Welcome, Director Planning. So look forward to your presentation.
I'm just going to share my screen. Okay. Okay. Um, so the purpose of this presentation is to present the statement of intent for the proposed regulatory framework for short-term rentals in Gibson's. And the statement of intent was prepared with third space planning. And Eric Swanson is in the attendees list right now, so he'll be moved over to a panelist and will be available to answer questions as well from, from the committee after this presentation. So the statement of intent is to, to, to regulate short-term rentals reflects council's recently clarified goals as well as the outcome of the workshop that was held on November 30th, 2021, that was aimed at resolving the remaining tensions. On October 5th, council passed a resolution establishing short-term rental regulatory goals and listed them from highest priority to lowest priority here on this slide. So the primary goals are to retain the long-term rental housing supply in Gibson's and keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods. The secondary goals here are responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to have added revenue and providing tourists with accommodation options for staying in and visiting Gibson's. In terms of the operational goals, so council has the, the the regulatory goals as listed previously, but there are also operational goals for it to run smoothly. So the operational goals for this regulatory program are to provide clarity of regulations and process. So that would be for members of the public to quickly understand the regulations, why they were chosen, and what's involved in permitting and one in permitting and operating a short-term rental in Gibson's. Obtaining a high level of initial voluntary compliance is basically the, the compliance period at the beginning of implementation, so in the early months. So once the regulations are adopted, there will be a grace period of approximately, approximately about three months. And during that time, we're hoping for voluntary compliance, where operators will either secure a valid business license for their short-term rental. They will either remove it from an online short-term rental platform, or they could switch their listing to a long-term rental. So the intention here is to get a high level of compliance, which would be above 80%. Obtaining a high level of ongoing compliance, so this is after the grace period is over. Ongoing compliance means the owners refrain from posting illegal short-term rental listings on platforms and any illegal listings are quickly removed in response to enforcement activity. So a high level of compliance here would be 90, above 90%. In terms of ease of enforcement, oh, am I sharing my notes here? Sorry. I don't know how to switch.
Yeah, you were. I was going to say something, but I
Okay, hang on. Sorry about that.
Um, they were good notes. It was good.
How, are you still seeing my notes?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know how to change this.
That's fine.
Okay, okay, sorry. Um, okay. I was getting text messages and I'm sharing my notes here, but they're, they're all in here. Um, okay, so um, for in terms of ease of enforcement, this is intended to ensure, ensure that the workload required by our bylaw enforcement staff is as light as possible and as straightforward as possible. So it's really important that the regulations that are created are enforceable. And the the fifth here is ensure cost recovery. That is for the town to recover a significant portion of the costs incurred in the design of its short-term rental program and ongoing operational costs are fully recovered or fully covered by business license fees and any fines levied through enforcement. So a housing-centric classification system. Um, this is intended to clearly distinguish between separate potential long-term homes in order to set up specific regulations that best advance council's number one goal of protecting the long-term rental housing in Gibson's. And this housing-centric classification system splits short-term rentals into two main types. So the two types here are principal dwelling units and non-principal dwelling units. So principal dwelling units are the suite of rooms where one primarily lives. So your home. And a non-principal dwelling unit is a, any unit that one owns, but does not primarily live in. So this would be a secondary suite accessory dwellings, like a garden, a garden suite, summer homes, or investment properties. So one, one part of the regulatory framework is to allow principal dwelling unit short-term rentals in all zones. So every every short-term rental is someone's primary home. This is true home sharing because it is your home and you would be sharing either a room or, or the entire dwelling unit while you are away, so on vacation or an extended work trip or living elsewhere at the time, although not permanently. So the intention of this is to advance council's secondary goals while protecting the intent of the primary goals. The other piece of this is to temporarily allow non-principal dwelling unit short-term rentals. So this would be to allow a limited number of entire dwelling short-term rentals under two-year temporary use permits. Um, this is intended to prioritize tourist accommodation in the harbor area. So that is the boundary of the harbor area plan as shown in this image here. This would advance council's secondary goals as well. And the intent of the program, program would be to eliminate the need for this type of short-term rental by replacing it with purpose-built commercial guest accommodation over the next two to five years. So there are a few properties in the harbor area that are slated for development. So for, for hotel development or tourist accommodation development. So this would be the George site, for example. We've got the Gibson's Landing Inn. It's right now, it's zoned for tourist accommodation. And we've got a rezoning application in for Stonehurst. So to convert that, the Inglis home, the heritage home into a six-room boutique hotel. So there is some potential tourist accommodation coming to the area. But until it's used for those purposes or built, then council could reassess after the two-year term. So in terms of allowing a limited number of these temporary use permits, the statement of intent suggests allowing 10 temporary use permits. However, Eric and I are working together to pull some more statistics to review some possible rationale to allow more than 10 TUPs, and this could be between 20 to 50, 20 to 60. And the intention here is to lessen the impact on the existing tourist accommodation options in Gibson's. But again, with the intention to eliminate the need for these permissions and the associated housing loss by helping to get enough purpose-built commercial accommodation up and running in Gibson's. So the evolution here would be that temporary use permits would be issued for a two-year term only. So the legislation, the Local Government Act allows council to issue TUPs for a three-year term. But the intention here is to limit it to two-year. It is very much intended to be temporary and sort of a pilot project. After the two-year term, council will review the SDR program and decide on next steps. So at that point, council could either continue with another round of TUPs, so authorize some more, or maybe there is some more, some more data that would support not doing this, and, and you could close the stream of short-term rental permission. If council does renew the, the temporary use permits for a second two-year term, at that point, once they expire four years down the road, council at that point can decide on whether to cement these permissions for short-term rentals. And that would be either through spot zoning or something like that. Or council could prohibit all non-principal dwelling unit short-term rentals and maintain the zoning regulations. Or council could relax the regulations on short-term rental permission. And that would be if rental vacancies increased or the diversity and affordability had significantly improved. Or if it's a new council or council priorities have changed, that would be an opportunity to rethink the approach. So in terms of the evaluation, an evaluation plan will be submitted as part of the regulatory and enforcement program and will detail methods by which Gibson's can evaluate the success of the program over time in achieving council's goals. So the evaluation of short-term rent of the program is So the evaluation of short-term rent of the program is intended to help council make an informed decision about A, whether to sustain, relax, or tighten the restrictiveness of the regulations, and B, how to make any required operational or procedural modifications to the program. So given council's number one goal of protecting Gibson's rental housing, the evaluation will include a new information about the state of Gibson's long-term rental market, vacancy rates, housing diversity, and housing affordability. So if there are improvements in these indicators, so vacancy rates go up, there's more housing options, affordability goes goes down so so people can afford places, then council might want to reconsider the restrictiveness of the program. If vacancy rates are still at an all-time low and it's hard to find a place to rent and housing is still really unaffordable, then it might justify the program we've got and council might want to keep keep the program in place or make further restrictions. In terms of timing for this program, and I said tentative because we're always working towards a timeline. But May 1st, 2022 is when we're hoping to bring the regulations into force. And at that point, once the bylaws are adopted, then there would be a three-month grace period that would begin. By the end of May, we'd like to close applications for temporary use permits. So anyone, any short-term rental operator who would want to apply for a TUP would apply in May before the end of the before the end of May. In July, we would bring the TUPs to council for a decision and council will decide on which ones to issue. And then as of August, the enforcement begins. So two years later, at the time that TUPs expire or just before they expire, we would have the first evaluation of the short-term rental program. So that would be Q1 or Q2 2024. So in terms of the recommendations, the recommendation on the staff report is that council directs staff to proceed with bylaw amendments to implement the short-term rental regulations as outlined in the statement of intent completed by Third Space Planning dated January 12, 2022, and updated January 24, 2022, which focuses on a housing-centric classification system. I am going to stop sharing my screen now. And Eric is in the audience or in he's right, he's a panelist now.
Thank you, Director. And perhaps we could invite Eric to join us and see if he's been part of this process. See the see everything but his head. Yeah.
One moment.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and it's good to see we are moving forward on this issue. And I'm sure council will have lots of questions. I would point out as well that and I don't know the I don't know the significance of it, but the Stats Canada released recently identified 200 vacant homes in Gibsons as of at the time the census was taken. And and I'm not sure whether those were people away and not renting out their homes or whether they were long-term vacancies. So but it is interesting to note that that was the case. The other thing is interesting is your your three-month in terms of a long-term rental, the three-month term of that somebody away and renting their house out. It actually does allow those snowbirds, if we call them that, to leave in October and come back at the end of March or in April and keep the house vacant or rented out for a six-month period. And they could do that on an annual basis because they would be following two consecutive years of three months in each year. So that, because I don't read that as being because it's three months per year. I didn't say that I could see that it's three months consecutively maximum. So it would allow that to have, which is fine. And then that suits a lot of people's needs for for getting away for a winter vacation. So the TUP timeline, the TUP, you didn't mention, but I assume it's assuming in your process that once the TUP applications are received, they will have to be referred to the neighbors. And then the referrals come back to council and that will be the timeline of July for council to consider those referrals, at which time we rejected some and approved some. Whether we got all ten, we could go back out a second time and provide other opportunities for people. So I'll go to council on questions. And I see that I'm going to go Ladwig, Crowe, and Andretti. So Council Ladwig.
Yeah, I want to commend the director of planning and Eric on a very thoughtful proposal. I think that this proposal does a very nice job of addressing the concerns of council. I think it builds in. It's customized enough to meet the needs of our specific community by looking specifically at the tourism accommodation needs around the harbor. So I think that's very well thought out and well done. I also really appreciate the fact that you've built in opportunities for evaluation so that we can make adjustments and learn as we go along. I just I'm really impressed. I think you guys have done a really good job. I think it's a very well thought through proposal. And I, to be honest, I actually don't really have any questions. I mean, I kind of debated the three-month period. I thought, you know, is there is there enough money to be made in three months to to make it worth someone's while not to rent it out all year and just literally have it as a short-term rental for three months and leave it vacant the rest of the time? And will we encounter that? I don't know. But like I've said, you guys have built in these opportunities for evaluation. So we'll see how it goes as we go along. And I think you've done a really good job. Thank you.
Well, that's great. That's great to hear. On your one concern there, that actually can't happen under this program because for a unit to classify as a principal dwelling in an STR, you have to attest to living in it for at least nine months of the year. So when you're not short-term renting it for a maximum of three months a year, you have to be living in it for the other nine months.
Yeah, there you go. Great. Thank you.
Council Crowe.
Thank you, Mary Mish, and thank you, Leslie Ann and Eric. Yeah, it's, you know, it's sort of a logistical nightmare, this thing. And it's, you know, I think it's been sort of frustrating for everyone that it's sort of dragged on this long. And even looking at, you know, what's ahead of us, we're still potentially looking at yet another year's lost revenue. But all that aside, I just wanted some clarification with with the TUPs. These are for standalone houses where the standalone houses. So in a situation, because the definition that we're using for property, if you have, let's say, an up-down to a house, two identical units, one up, one down, the owner's living above, and you have the vacant, the potential STR below or vice versa. In a situation like that, to rent the whole thing out, are you requiring a TUP in if it was in the, let's say, the, first of all, period and specifically in the in the the harbor development area?
Yeah. So thanks for the question. We'll be presenting Terminology, this housing-centric classification system that gets really specific about your example containing two separate dwelling units. So in your example, the owner lives in the top unit. That would be their principal dwelling unit. Terminology is subject to change, but the concept is that's the unit they live in. The one down below would be a separate unit, and so a non-principal dwelling unit, short-term rental, which would be prohibited under the program except for these temporary use permits, you know, concentrated in the harbor area. And so this person could apply for a TUP for the bottom floor while those those temporary permissions are in effect.
Okay. And what about outside of the harbor development area if that same existing condition existed?
That's actually a great question and something Leslie and I were talking about yesterday. So she was flagging the statement of intent contains this initial idea, you know, ten TUPs. That was just an initial thought based on an equivalency with what Squamish was offering. You know, now we're going to be bringing your recommendation likely to permit a higher number of those to minimize the the impact on the tourist accommodation sector while this, you know, program is implemented and while there's, we give time for commercial purpose-built accommodation to be built. So the question then is, you know, say we recommend, you know, fifty, you know, or twenty to fifty, sixty TUPs. Are there enough operating STRs in the harbor area to kind of make up that accommodation gap? Or do we need to start permitting units outside of the harbor area plan in order to kind of maintain that accommodation stock over the first couple of years? The answer to that may be likely yes. Just kind of looking at the map right now of available listings in Gibsons. So with the idea is when we bring the bylaws to you, we'll bring a kind of a range of TUP numbers in our recommendation. And then we should revisit your question about like how flexible we need to be about where these are approved on a temporary basis. The long-term intent to concentrate accommodation in the harbor area though remains.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, we also talked about having a criteria list. So when we do have TUPs, we'll have some sort of criteria on how to prioritize them or how to determine whether they're appropriate short-term rentals. And one of the criteria could be, is it in the harbor area plan in that boundary? And if it is, maybe it would jump the, it would jump priority. So we could concentrate, we could focus on concentrating the majority of them possibly in the harbor area, but also allow some outside of the harbor area. And it would all depend on what that magic number is, how many, how many of these extra TUPs would council want to issue?
Just a brief follow-up comment, the communication is is on this is going to be because it is, you know, I can feel my mind sort of, you know, twisting and and turning, trying to get my head around some of the concepts. And I, you know, having an inside seat on this, I sort of appreciate where they're coming from and how other municipalities have wrestled with them. But the communication component of this is going to be because it, there's a lot to consider and you know, I'm sort of anticipating some of the reaction we're going to get. So just flagging it.
Hundred percent to that, by the way. That has definitely been our experience in other communities. And so my my hope is that in addition to providing the draft bylaw amendments, assuming direction is given to create those, I want to actually give you some draft public communication materials to go along with that. So you can kind of see, you know, how this all is going to be communicated at the same time as you're considering the technical details. Because it should make sense to all of us, you know, and everyone at that time.
Council Dandrea.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great to read this report after so much we went through. So thank you. It was really easy and comprehensive. I have a few questions. One regards, I I'm really pleased with the thirty days, the consecutive days. But I have an issue with the nine months because some people, they go outside to winter and they go a little bit over four months. So I understand the thirty days, the ninety days should be still applicable. But I almost feel that if someone goes eight months and a half or eight months, they won't be able to do. Even though people who are retired, that's usually what they go through, sometimes four months. So this is one question. My second question regards, I don't know if it was mentioned, maybe I missed. If a person rents their principal dwelling and they are there, can they also rent a secondary suite? So that's my second question at the same time. The third question or regards in this process of selecting, giving TUPs, the temporary, are we gonna involve the neighborhood? Because obviously, our first, one of our first part of our two top concerns is neighborhood. It's a not-impacted neighborhood. So and I'm sure in the harbor, there will be locations that will be less, the neighborhood will be less impacted than others. And my first, my last question regards the evaluation. The comment that Mary Mish made of this two hundred units that we don't know if they are just empty or people are vacationing. So my, how can we, do we have a way of getting this answer right now? So we can really track the progress? Because my concern is, or maybe my curiosity, how are we going to find out the number of people renting right now and could be able to see the progress, the impact, the positive impact that the STRs made in the community? Well, I mean, this by law made in the community.
Great questions. I'm going to take questions one, two, and four, and then I'm going to defer to Leslie Ann for the TUP process. So question one around the eight and a half months. Yeah, great point. And actually, that's going to be one of like the the dials. You and council are going to have to tweak when it comes time to approve the bylaws. Do we want it to be nine months to count as a principal residence? Do we want it to be eight? Do you want it to be seven? That really kind of is up to you. And so that'll be kind of one of the micro dials to tweak before final adoption, along with, you know, the exact number of TUPs and a couple of very small details that you can you can change without changing the fundamental nature of the program. So that's something to, that's something that will come up when it comes time to review the bylaw. So think about it in the meantime, and if you have a preference, you can develop it. So the second one is secondary suite. So this kind of comes back to Council Crowe's question as well. If it's a separate dwelling unit, then it will count as a non-principal dwelling unit. And so will be prohibited under the program except under this temporary use permit stream, which won't last forever. The fourth was evaluation. And honestly, like this is what a lot of communities are having a really hard time with. And it's what we're going to be putting a lot of effort in to make sure we can kind of get you to the front of the pack as best as we can. For example, you know, we'll be bringing up Squamish as an analog just because they're nearby and they're kind of using a similar program. They've had a hard time showing impact on the rental housing stock, right? Because it's just, there's not a lot of data available a lot of the time and it's just hard to track. I've got some ideas about how we can do better than most. And that will be documented in the evaluation plan that will accompany the the bylaw amendments as well. I'll keep you in suspense until then.
Just before, as part of an idea, I wonder if we can give some sort of reward for renters if they let us know, right? If they got, I don't know, something like that. At least we can have some. So that's just one idea.
We need out-of-the-box thinking. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jot that down. No, seriously. Okay. And the the last question was TUP process in the neighborhood, Leslie.
Okay, so I'll just quickly answer that. In terms of the TUP process, when once people apply, we bring the report forward to council. How we do that at this point, we're still kind of, we're going to work out how we're going to do that. But the intention would be to bring them all forward at the same time. And then council can decide which ones you'd want to proceed with notifications on. So we bring forward a report to notify neighbors, then we go out notify neighbors, put the ads in the paper, and then solicit some feedback submissions. And then we would come back with a second report for a decision for council. And that would include the neighbor feedback that we receive. So it'll take, it'll take some time because we're going to do a batch processing. And in a perfect world, we'd have sort of a table and outline all the comments received and and tailor them to each application so that council can make an informed decision with the comments received.
Council Crowe.
Um, thank you. I'm just going back to, and it's sort of something that Councilor Danredy alluded to is, you know, our intention here is to try and encourage long-term rental. And currently, and I'm just putting out a hypothetical situation. You have a situation where you have a full suite available. It's not your primary residence. You live above it or below it. And you apply for your TUP, you get your TUP, so you can run it for two years as a short-term rental. Fine. If I have that same suite as a, and a rentable suite, I'm subject to increased service charges from the community. So why would I ever consider renting it long-term rental if I'm going to have to pay more more utilities? So, you know, if we're trying to encourage housing on one hand, we're going to have to counterbalance that on the other with, you know, incentives for landlords and property owners to go long-term. Because right now, it's full steam ahead STR because I don't have additional costs. I'm making way more money. I don't have to deal with residential tenancy. So why wouldn't I do it? So I think if we're, our number one goal is to increase rental housing. So I think if we're, our number one goal is to increase rental housing. We've got to incentivize, uh, property owners and landlords.
Uh, yes, and a couple of details to point out, um, that may respond to that. The first is that the temporary permissions are temporary. And so they will, and under the act, you can only grant them for a maximum, a maximum of six years. Under the proposed program, it's going to be more like, you know, you know, four. So kind of two rounds of permissions. And so after that, there will be a prohibition. And so they will not be able to choose short term rental for these non-principal dwelling units. In the meantime, in the short term, um, we're, I'm, we're going to recommend fairly high fees for these non-principal dwelling and short term rentals. A lot of operators are pulling in us, I'm going to say us, when I look at it, a somewhat staggering amount of revenue kind of per unit on these things. And so they can afford to pay higher business license fees and an appropriate temporary use application fee as well. And so as far as like the economic incentives go, um, even in the short term, some may choose to, um, go long term rental. But the main point is the intent is to transition away from any of these units being used all to long term rental. Whether at the end of the day, after the temporary use stream expires, people decide to keep that unit empty. Cause it's, they don't need, they don't need any revenue and they just want the flexibility. That's something that's kind of outside of our control, but, um, a lot of those units are likely to return to the housing market.
Councilor Ludwig.
I just wanted to second everything that Councilor Kroll just said there about incentivizing long term rentals. I, I've said it before myself and I just fully agree with that. So definitely something that we need to be thinking about as a council. Um, I'm curious whether or not we're putting in a definition for what a secondary suite is. And the reason I raise that is because, um, well, I'm just curious what you guys think. What, what do you think a secondary suite is? Is that a second lock off entrance? Is that a stove in DC building code right now? You just have to, whether you put in a stove or not determines whether or not it's a secondary suite. If you don't put in a stove, it's just another bedroom. If you put in a stove, it's a secondary suite. So I'm just curious how you guys define the secondary suite.
Um, yeah, go for it, Leslie.
Okay, we do, we do have secondary suite defined in our zoning bylaw. So there are limitations on what they are. They have to be forty percent, in terms of the size, forty percent of the main dwelling unit has to have a kitchen, all that kind of thing. But what we would do when we draft these regulations is we have to look at all the bylaw definitions. We have to look at tourist accommodation, we have to look at primary dwelling unit. And, and we'd have to draft it so that it fits into the zoning bylaw. So that's where these terms we're using, um, may change. But the intention for this conversation is more to understand, um, the direction we're going in. When we bring the bylaw forward, it would have more detailed, um, definitions. And it would have to fit into the existing regulatory zoning bylaw.
Okay, I, I just raised that because it's very, it's, I see that as being, um, a loophole, I guess you could say, potentially in this proposal. I think it's great, but a potential loophole is that, um, you, you know, there's no, like right now, I'm, I'm in a, in what used to be a secondary suite in this house that I'm in. And it's very easily convert, it could be very easily converted to a secondary suite. Or right now I've, I'm using this space as my primary residence. I've, I'm just using both floors right now as my primary residence, but it could very easily be a secondary suite. And so I just, I think it's, uh, it's just something to think about when you're, when we're putting this, uh, plan together is, is defining what a secondary suite is and trying to fill that, that loophole.
Yeah, for sure. Well, we're going to aim for a lot of precision there. And actually, something else to note that responds, um, might be helpful to note here, but also in relation to the previous comments. Part of the process will be that a licensed inspector needs to be on site to grant it before a business license is approved. Um, and so we get eyes on the unit, not a building inspector, because we don't want to trigger a bunch of stuff, just a licensed inspector. And so, um, in addition to very precise definitions, there will also be kind of eyes on the site to confirm the nature of the unit. And another thing I really like about this as well is that you can actually enter into conversation with these owners at that inspection point. Um, and talk about the long term intent of the program to transition as many of these units as possible back to long term rental. So to Councilor Kroll, your point, like I'm hoping we can start to get some, you can start to get some qualitative data out of this process about what kind of incentives are required? What are the barriers to using, you know, those units at the end of the day as long term rentals? So that you can use some of this TUP revenue and other revenue to do the planning that is necessary to kind of achieve that long term outcome that you want. Which is, you know, a bunch of long term rentals out of this. So I hope that's going to be one of the, kind of one of the, um, elegant parts of the program.
I'm going to ask a question before, uh, Russ, you jump in, two questions. One is, uh, what is the situation with Stratus? My preference would be that if we're going to allow Stratus to be involved in this process, that they would be required to have a, a written permission of their strata council. Uh, and so that's clear. So we are not enforcing the strata rules. And, and, and we're just saying, okay, you have written permission to strata council to do this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and it's very common. So, uh, we're going to include that as part of the requirements.
See, so many communities where we get into a fight, the, the, the municipality becomes the, the meat and the sandwich. An argument between the strata council and the, and the, and the tenant, the owner. So the, the other thing is that where I have a concern is that in recent years, there's been a lot of new housing built in the community that is based upon providing short term rental as a business. And, uh, we're now basically putting those people in a position of saying, no, you're going to have to go long term rental. And I'm wondering if there's a way around that. And that, that way around that might simply be that those, those places that, where they, where the purpose built is short term rentals. And I can think of a few of them, uh, purpose built for that reason, that they would only be allowed to be, to continue in that classification. If the owner agreed that they would never rent the main portion or unit out for a short term rental or a long term, or, or, or a long term rental. They must agree to remain as the onsite landlord relative to the units that they have purpose built in their house. Because that, the, the big issue that, that most of the community has is not the fact that they're short term rentals. It's their party houses, is that there are empty houses being used for short term rentals. Uh, so places that are purpose built for that, uh, we just want to make sure that there's someone on site, uh, responsible for the, uh, oversight and management of that rental. And, and that's, uh, uh, I just hate to see people who have made an investment in the last five years of a, a brand new house and put in one or two short term rental suites in that house, uh, to be suddenly told, well, your, your business plan is out the window. Uh, the other aspect of that too would be that we then convert those into commercial, uh, types of accommodation as opposed to simply, uh, homes with short term rentals and.
Um, I could give my thoughts, but Leslie Ann, um, or do you want me to just quickly go?
Yeah, go for it.
So, uh, I definitely see where you're coming from there. My, my concerns with that, I have a few concerns with that. The first is it might be difficult to adjudicate what the intent was upon building that unit in the first place. People could claim, uh, could claim that the intent was, this was always going to be an STR, um, even if it wasn't. Um, so that could be tricky. The second piece of context is that, in my understanding, you've never permitted as short term rentals. And so if somebody makes a business decision to invest in an unpermitted, not yet legal activity, um, they're taking kind of a known risk there. A risk that could be easily confirmed by a quick call to municipal hall or whatever. And so, and so there's that. And then I guess the third piece is, you know, Gibson's isn't a huge community. Like you don't have a, you don't have a huge housing stock. And so a relatively, a relatively small number of short term rentals can make a not insignificant difference to like the availability of, of ownership of rental housing. And so I, if you wanted to maintain your number one goal of, of protecting the long term rental supply, my recommendation would be to not give those types of units special permissions outside of the recommended kind of temporary TUP stream. Which hopefully should give people time to kind of a, adjust their long term kind of financial planning for their properties.
Also, Colonel, Colonel, I saw your hand.
I was just getting very concerned about what you were saying, and I think Eric has addressed it brilliantly. So thank you for acknowledging me and thank you for your comments, Eric.
Yeah, uh, Councilor Deirdre.
Thank you. It's just a question suggestion regarding the hotels. Uh, if, uh, the municipality will be, the town will be in contact with the hotels. I understand that during COVID, they might have been hit harder or maybe at one point, but maybe not in another. But if this will be a supportive, uh, statistic to understand, because it's suddenly with the program, they have an increase that they could see clearly, that's not necessarily, uh, just the season, that is a little bit beyond. I wonder if this could help to understand that the STR is actually impacted, right? The, sorry, the bylaw had some impact. In, because if the tourist, I mean, this regards a number of tourists, right? If they're coming to town and suddenly there is less STRs, I wonder if some of them would choose hotels. Do, do you see any possibility there?
You mean like, for example, if the George, you know, gets built?
No, no, the George, no, because it's not built, but the current hotels that exist in town.
Right, yeah.
If there's a, a sort of statistical following, if, if would make sense. Because if the, the bylaw is implemented and, and suddenly we come, we're from, let's say that we have a, right now, two hundred STRs. And suddenly we're going to come down to, you know, hundred. Maybe two, maybe, maybe. Come to town, that could be a possibility, or maybe they choose a hotel. So I don't know if, I'm just wondering if there's make sense to have some sort of conversation with hotel, just in terms of statistic. I don't know if could help understand, but.
Yeah, possibly, possibly. This is probably a, a good point to kind of go back to the, the, the goal for the TUP subcomponent of the program. I was mentioning originally, we're like, ah, maybe ten. But, you know, we were getting some statistics from Sunshine Coast Tourism, just to give a little bit of better picture of the accommodation scene, and it's super tight, you know, in Gibson's. Like they were showing that short term rentals in the summer peak were essentially full occupancy, um, right? So there's obviously a, a pretty, um, obvious need for accom- accommodation of any type in Gibson's to kind of maintain that, that, uh, that tourism activity. Um, and so, like I said, when we come back with the bylaws, we'll probably be coming back with a recommendation to grant a fair number of these. So that over the short term, so that you might not actually see that migration you're talking about of people. And because they can't find an STR, they need to go to the hotels instead. There might be enough of these TUPs in the short term to kind of keep, keep them in there. Um, and another kind of qualitative difference between the type of accommodation offered by those hotels, which according to Sunshine Coast, I guess are kind of in the two to five, two to five, two, two to two point five star range. You know, that's, that's qualitatively quite a bit different than what people can find in the short term rental market right now. And so if they can't find an STR, they might not necessarily jump like to those hotels.
A number of those hotels are currently also providing long term rental. And that's, yeah, so that they, they, uh, they provide that for an ongoing basis for construction companies to purchase blocks and rooms now. I saw some hands, um, okay, take Councilor Kroll.
Thank you, Mayor Beamish. I think, um, you know, we possibly might not have seen the increase in STRs in the community had there been a hotel which offered, um, a view. Like if you look at our, our hotel accommodation in this community, none of them have a view of anything other than a parking lot. So, you know, a hotel in, in a view corridor or a view area that could, you know, the reason for coming, most tourists coming to the Sunshine Coast are coming for the, the location, uh, the geography and the view. So, you know, given the option of a short term rental in the harbor area or on the, um, you know, the heritage hills with a view or a hotel looking at a parking lot, what would you choose? So I think, you know, if there's a hotel that offers options for why people are coming here, there might be a decrease in the STRs in the long term. And hopefully they may revert to long term rentals.
I think the public information, Eric and Leslie Ann needs to have a fairly significant Q and A aspect to it. So that, uh, some of the questions that we raised and some of these that, and how, how they, how they are answered. So that people can look at that and say, well, what about my situation? And I think that's a big part of what we need to anticipate is that people will have legitimate concerns and how, how they can be responded to. Uh, I do like the idea of perhaps initially offering a significantly more than ten, uh, TUPs. And I think that's important to look at as well. Hey, Councilor Kroll, you've, one further.
This was one of the comment, and it sort of goes back to what you were, um, brought up earlier, Mayor Beamish was, you know, there are people, and I know people who've bought houses in the community and they're being run as short term rentals. And the realtor said, you know, it's great, this is great, you can pay your mortgage with the STR income. And there's a house that, you know, they didn't question the price when they bought it. It was, you know, it met all their criteria. So I think, you know, it's, it's going to be interesting. And I think this TUP aspect of things, um, might change a lot of things in the market. It might even level out host prices a bit.
Okay, um, we, uh, need a resolution. Councilor Kroll, where are you?
I'm, I'm happy to move the recommendations of staff.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Ludwig. Is there any further discussion, those recommendations, they will come back to us, we're not finished yet. But I think that, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a strong step forward. And I, I thank you, Leslie Ann and Eric for being patient to get us to this point. Uh, it takes a lot and, uh, to be able to anticipate and then hear us and, and interpret what you've heard well. So I appreciate you've done that. So we do look forward to further constant, company, constant consultation, con- conversation. That's what I want to get, a conversation. But I also want to say the consultation is going to be very important on this. And that's going to be a, an important piece. And we need to make sure we build that in and, uh, and let people know. There's a, there's a active group Airbnb, um, team, and I suspect that since they don't want to put their names to it, uh, that they are probably somebody outside the community that just simply is watching all this Airbnb movement going on and, uh, and has their own lobby going forward. So they will definitely be lobbying against any major change that they are not comfortable with. So, so that, uh, countering that lobby is, is also important, so. And Councilor Lumley, you get the last word before we vote.
Uh, I'm opposed, so.
Okay.
Take the vote and, and oppose it and.
Okay.
That'll be good.
I'll call all in favor then, all in favor. And opposed. Thank you, Councilor Lumley. Okay, okay. Uh, and maybe we'll have, uh, further conversation with you on that, uh, on your opposition. So I appreciate that. But thank you, and we'll see this come back to us, uh, and what was your timeline, uh, Leslie Ann?
Um, the, the timeline is to bring the bylaws forward, um, for adoption in May, so.
Okay. For adoption, is that including consultations?
We would have to consult before that, so April. Um, April, we'd bring something forward.
Okay. Uh, go to Councilor Ludwig.
I'm just dying to know, what, Councilor Lumley, why do you oppose it? What, are you willing to talk about it right now? Like what is it that, that you don't like about the proposal?
You're muted. We can't hear your.
Yeah, I've been somewhat opposed to it throughout most of these discussions. So I, I don't think you should be surprised. I, yeah, I think it's, it's too restrictive, it's too far down the scale for me. So I don't, yeah, I mean, I could, I don't want to get into it right now, but.
Okay.
You want to talk about it, I can talk about it. I mean, yeah, so I just, restrictive.
Okay, thanks.
And Rebecca?
I just want to clarify whether Councilor Lumley wished that to be on the record as opposed or just leave it.
Always on the record.
Thank you. Okay, well, Eric, thank you very much, and, uh, Leslie Ann, we'll, uh, let you guys go and get working on the consultation piece now, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kroll, you have a question?
Um, my solo comment, sir, if I may, is, you know, with this work in progress, I think, you know, as a council, we still need to look at, what we can do to incentivize landlords to go into long term rental.
Yeah.
There are, you know, there's some conditions in place that make very onerous for. There are, you know, there's some conditions in place that make it very onerous for them. It makes it more costly for them, and I think there's opportunity. You know, I I'm sure Counselor Lumley, as a business owner, is aware of problems his own staff have finding accommodation. Um, it's challenging. So, um, and it's it, you know, unnoticed just chatting to business people when we put up the awards at the chamber. You know, every one of the businesses I spoke to, their biggest issue was staff and finding staff accommodation that was affordable in the community. So I think it's something we are going to have to work with hand in glove for this initiative going forward.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will go to item three point three on the agenda. And that's the Director of Finance for the Finance and Human Resources Department, twenty twenty one Q four report. Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I appreciate the opportunity, even though we're a month and a half into the new year, uh, to talk about quarter four in our department. So much of the focus in quarter four for finance relates to the fall utility billing. It's our second utility billing of the year, as well as we also work on property tax follow up to wrap up the year's property taxation. We also start working on the upcoming year, and as you're aware, we were working on the long term financial plans for twenty twenty two for water and sewer, as well as starting to prepare the twenty twenty two uh budget. So my report on pages one to three provides you with the detailed information on our activities relating to budget and financial reporting and just generally our finance activities. Uh, the H R section, as you can see, um, H R continues to be quite busy for us, and like many local governments, we are um experiencing staffing shortages and having challenges filling vacancies. But I think our, you know, our hard work is paying off, and we've seen some positive results recently. So I'm hoping that that will will continue. Our H R manager is working really hard to help us get our staffing back up to where it needs to be. Uh, page three and four, I provided some preliminary year end balances, and I want to emphasize that these are preliminary because we're still working on year end right now. Those are not final, and they are subject to change, but I wanted to give you those at this point, just so you can get a sense of where things are landing. My quarter one report will show um the final numbers, and then, of course, I'll speak to that when I present the um, financial statements in early April is the hope for that. Um, skipping or moving over to page five regarding COVID. So in twenty twenty one, for the full year, the town has paid just over two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars for operational expenses relating to the pandemic. And there's the chart there, table on page five that shows the breakdown of the three areas um that we were qualifying for, and mostly, you know, computer technology, uh, a lot of operations cost, as well as some services provided for vulnerable people. And so that reaches the two hundred and sixty seven thousand for the twenty twenty one. And so that brings the balance of the um safe restart grant to about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's still available. Uh, the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three budget that um I'm working on right now looks like we're going to be using about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that remaining money. So that still leaves about seven hundred thousand dollars for projects that meet the intent of the grant, and I expect some of those will come forward as part of the uh projects budget presentation in mid March that we bring to you on March. I think it's March fifteenth. Um, regarding the COVID, the community grant that uh Council created last year, it was a total of twenty five thousand dollars. So of that, just over seventeen thousand was awarded under that specific program. And in addition, also, though uh, the council authorized eighty four hundred dollars to the Seashell Aquatic Center. And so that total provided um just over almost twenty six thousand dollars to external agencies in the community. So not only did we use some of the money for town operations, but council was able to extend that up to community organizations as well. And on the last two pages, uh, pages seven and eight, I want to talk about grants. And so grants is another area that's been incredibly active. You know, there's a lot of grant opportunities in the not only in the province, but in the in the country as well. And so the towns, I've listened on page seven, we've been successful, have many successful grant awards. They're listed on page seven there. The total total amount is just over two point two million, which is a pretty significant amount of money for a town our size. And most of those projects are underway. Uh, some of them, you know, have been paused, but most are underway. One's very recent, so that's about to start hopefully shortly. And then page eight shows we still have three pending grant applications, decisions on those, and those decisions are, as you can see, quite delayed. They were, you know, early and mid twenty twenty one submissions. And we're still waiting for the um decisions on those grants, and we are hopeful, but still waiting on the final decisions on those ones. So that gives you a sense of what we're we were doing back in quarter four of twenty twenty two. Uh, quarter one for this year, very, very busy. It's our busiest um time, and we are actively working on year end uh financial reporting and, of course, budgets. So the next report I'm going to be bringing you is next week, and that'll be the twenty twenty two general operations budget uh for your review, and I'm hoping to have that available to you um in the next day or day or two. So thank you very much. If you have any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I have one question uh this time, that is regarding our COVID grants that we uh provide to the community. Uh, we still then have a balance in there of about uh eight thousand dollars approximately. I would be looking to, and perhaps we'll talk with counsel about that later, but reestablishing that again, it it's taking that eight. Now, did we carry that over, or is that just gone in surplus back into back into the fund?
That stays in the COVID grants. I only pull out of the grant the amount that is um needed, and so that money, that eight is still in the grant. So that would be a, then that was going to be one of my questions for council when I present next week was, what do you want to do with that? Do you want to top it up? Do you want to keep the program? Do you want to? Well, what what do you want to do there? So.
Good. I'll be probably recommending we top it up again and give organization, we're still not over yet. A lot of organizations have had the same cost uh starting into this year as they had last year. And so, but we'll talk about that when we get to it. So thank you.
Good.
Counsel, any questions? Uh, Counselor Crowell and Counselor Ludwig?
Uh, I just wanted to thank the Director of Finance for the report. I said, you know, I think the fact that there's so few questions is the is the in the proof that she covered everything so well. So just my thanks for a great report.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I'm glad it's not super boring, so that's good to know.
Counselor Ludwig?
Just the same thing as Counselor Crowell. Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate getting a report to you, and it's really helpful to see the grants. I I found that really helpful.
Yeah.
These grants, we hear them in the, you know, all around, but to see them laid out like that is is.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for that feedback. I'm I'm glad to. It helps me as well because there are a lot to keep track of. So I'm glad it's helpful for you. Good. Thank you.
One question I have, and it came up today, uh, yesterday, it's asking if we do a further advertising for the Thrive Grant uh for the art walk. And the question comes is, where does that money come from? Now, will that, will we take that out of the grant money itself or take that out of the public art reserve? Or where would we take that uh advertising cost from?
Normally, if the grant um provides, that would be a grant cost, and we would take it out of there. It would just be, we'd have to look a bit into the grant criteria. But normally, those type of costs are covered as eligible under grants, but we can take a look at that.
Okay. And then the other option would be is to say the public art reserve is all one, one on one, certainly.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just think we need to publicize that a bit. Uh, counsel's information that Tracy has in her office, a superb example of a submission. And if you want to have a look at that, it's it's really, really very interesting. It it came in hard copy. I'll say no more. Uh, so that if you have a chance, if you buy the office, because we will be turning that down to the to Stuart Stinson, who's been looking after this project for us at the gallery. But that's a superb example of a of a submission received. Uh, so you see the kind of quality that we hope to get on this project, so. As that being said, uh, do you have any further questions, counsel? Uh, seeing that we have moved, we have already received the report. We're not amending it or doing anything else to it. So uh, Director of Finance, thank you and your team very much for the work that you have done and you continue to do to balance our checkbook. Thank you. Counsel, that concludes the agenda. Uh, we will now go to inquiries, item four, and I'll invite the corporate officer to identify, bring forward anybody who wishes to make an inquiry at this time.
As if any, I feel we have my hand up already. Connie Jordensen will be joining you.
Thank you. Connie, good afternoon. You're still muted there, sir. There you are.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Mayor Bemish. Uh, just looking to confirm that the bylaws related to short term rentals wouldn't be referred to public hearing?
Uh, not public hearing, because it's not a zoning or an O C P amendment. It it will be, oh, I'm going to go to Leslie Ann's stats on that. Sorry.
No problem. Yes, they would. They would go to a public hearing because they will be a zoning amendment. So
There you go.
Um, a few different bylaw amendments, but it would require consultation and a public hearing.
Good, 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 good to know that. Thank you for asking that question. Yeah.
Also, just wanted to ask about the timing for the potential uh change to regulations coming right at sort of the busiest season for short term rentals in the community. Uh, I would hazard to guess that potentially the August long weekend and September long weekend at many of these areas may already be booked. Um, have you, has there been consideration for what that might mean?
Director of Planning, in terms of the timeline?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of our timeline, we're still looking at a three month grace period. Um, these short term rentals that are being booked are um not permitted under the zoning bylaw. We haven't been enforcing it, but um, a lot of these operators do know that it is not allowed. Um, and so when we bring the the bylaws forward, uh, we we are going to be presenting it with likely a three month grace period, but council can always look at that and request an extension.
Yeah, you could extend that grace period. That's a good point to bring out. I appreciate that. We're not trying to kind of beat anybody up on this, but we are trying in the long term to have a better uh accommodation plan for the town, so.
Understood, and thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions.
Is there anyone else who has a question? Please raise your hand. I see no further hands raised, Mayor Bemish.
Okay, with that, that means that we get a chance to have supper, so that the next meeting is going to be of the community whole will be on Tuesday, March sixth, twenty twenty two. Uh, don't forget, counsel, that we have a special meeting and then you got the finance uh meeting next week. Uh, so so that uh we will be back here again on on the on the budget process. So I will ask for an adjournment, motion to adjourn. Counselor Crowell, Counselor Dean Dred, all in favor of adjournment? Okay, thank you, and we'll see you at seven o'clock. Thank you very much. C E O, thank you.
Bye now.